Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular meeting scheduled for February 28th, 2022. At this time, I would like to call our meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Moving on, we're going to, at this time, entertain any motions to approve today's agenda. You've all been presented with the agenda earlier in the week. You've had a chance to look it over. This time, I'll entertain any motions. Councilmember Crowman, yes?
I'm looking for the number. I would like to remove item 5G and request that we take that up at a future meeting. This is a LaSour County Congressional and Legislative Redistricting Resolution.
Very good. You want to make that motion?
I so move.
Second.
Made by Councilmember Crowman, seconded by Councilmember Sullivan. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, then I would, with the remaining items, I would move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Member Crowman. It's been seconded by Member Sullivan to approve the agenda minus 5G. All those in favor, or any other, any other discussions, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. We've been on to presentations. This time, we will be swearing in our new police chief. We, we had a nice crowd today to see our former police chief Bruce Kelly retire, and tonight, we'd like to welcome our new police chief, Mr. Aaron Tiki. At this time, if you want to step up, and we'll do the oath.
Good evening, Officer Tiki.
Sean.
This time, I want to ask if you just repeat the oath, and we will swear. I, Chief Aaron Tiki.
I, Chief Aaron Tiki.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution and State of Minnesota.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that it will faithfully discharge the duties of police, of Chief of Police.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Chief of Police.
Within and for the city of LaSour and the state of Minnesota.
Within and for the city of LaSour and the state of Minnesota.
On my honor, I will never betray my integrity.
On my honor, I will never betray my integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards and uphold the values of my community.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards and uphold the values of my community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Officer Tiki, I'm going to have you sign with me. Thank you. Chief Tiki, thank you very much.
Moving on to consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. These items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the agenda. It's considered in normal sequence. So with that said, I will ask our city administrator to kind of review these for us.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of council. Tonight, we have the city council meeting minutes from February 14th, 2022, 2022. We have the dispersment approvals. Those dispersments totaled just under $500,000 through today, February 28th. Items of note, we made our final fitness equipment lease for the community center fitness equipment. We did the revenue, sales tax payment to the Department of Revenue, and then a bond payment for our 2020A debt service. Next, we have a series of airport items. We have the airport maintenance, our pavement maintenance authorized to bid. We have the airport ARPA agreement. What that is, is a modification to that current agreement based on the availability of some equipment, a tractor, a piece of equipment that's a tractor. We have the North Taxi Lane Construction to authorize for bid. We have the liquor license approval for the bar and grill. That, that establishment changed ownership, so, so we're transferring that license. Item G has been removed, and we will take that up at the next meeting. We have the Marty Mylan retirement from the LaSour Fire Department. We have a, a good group of people here tonight to, to honor Marty and his years of service. And then we have a couple personnel actions. We have the, the hiring of a public services technician, deputy city clerk. That is Jackie Fay, who's recommended for that position. And then Personnel Actions City Administrator, I submitted my letter of resignation for this position. And my last day with the city of LaSour will be April 8th. So those are the items on the consent agenda tonight. I'll entertain any questions if there are any.
Anybody with any questions, comments, concerns directed at the city administrator?
Just one comment. Thanks, Marty. Congratulations. Best of luck to you. Appreciate your 23 years of service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. We appreciate it. Lot of changes. Anything else? I'd also like to thank our city administrator. We want to wish you well with your endeavors as you move forward with your career, and, and we still have you for another 45 days or so?
Yes, sir.
Okay, wonderful. If not, if there's no other questions or concerns, I'll entertain any motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg. Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Any other questions, concerns, comments? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. This time, we'd like to recognize Mr. Mylan. If you want to step forward, so everybody can give you a little handshake, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to public comment. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming and supporting Mr. Mylan. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting on a sheet providing identify themselves by providing their name and address. We have one person who's like to address the council tonight, Mr. Mike Toohey. How are you doing tonight, Mr. Toohey?
Very good. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
I've got a, my, for five minutes, so I'm going to hit the button now. All right. This all started for me last quarter. Article in the paper, and I, I couldn't find it to, to confirm, but I think the city taxes are going up like 17%, and I believe it said in there that the, the tax or the budget was reviewed a dozen times, and there was no wiggle room. Fair enough. I was in manufacturing for over 40 years, and the number one cost to doing business in my case was materials, and there wasn't much you could do about that. The second was labor, to include wages and benefits. Right now, the average hourly worker, full-time, wages and benefits, cost between $70,000 and $80,000 a year. So I decided to take a look. No room for move. I'll take a look. On December 13th, I sent an email to Sean, and God bless him, he answered it. And I didn't know about the systems in place with the data request and all of that. I said, how many people does the city of LaSour employ? And by department, if you can. I don't care names, or I just want a number. Well, he was kind enough, and I think he shot from the hip, to come back and say 30 to 40 to include the police department. Honestly, that sounded a little low to me. But he also said, get in touch with the, you know, the administration for more detail. So I sent a, on December 15th, or no, I'm sorry, January 13th, oh, nope, da, 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 da. December 15th was the reply. January 13th, I sent an email, I think, to Joe, and he sent me the copy of the data request. So I got that back, and I filled it out, and I asked, how many people, or no, what I did was, I thought, okay, if all of us who've ever worked, the one thing we can be sure of getting is a W-2 form. Okay? So I said, how many W-2s did the city of LaSour issue for calendar 2020, understanding that that would have been for 19, but I didn't figure you'd have them done when this started in December? The number came back at 136. 136 W-2 forms. And I'm thinking, holy smokes, that's not even close. So I sent another email to the mayor, and he kindly, I had to give him a squirt because I had it for a second request, but he did come back. And he said, well, there's a lot of part-time, there are, you know, you guys get W-2s, even, you know, you don't get paid squat, but you still get paid by the city. Fair enough. Fair enough. So I said, okay, second data request, same piece of paper, crossed out the first one, and I added, how many employees, full and part-time, did the city of LaSour have in calendar 2020? That number came back by the same person at 86. So you got 86 people on the payroll, full and part-time, yet 136 W-2 forms. Where did the other 50 go? Where are they? So I have, myself, came to one of three conclusions. Number one, the data from the city is wrong. The data I was given is no good. The other possibility is, and I don't think, but this city would have to have an enormous turnover rate to generate that many more W-2s than employees on the books. In other words, somebody works for three days, quits, somebody else comes in, quits, 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 quits. It's one position, perhaps, but a whole line of W-2s. I don't think that's the case. The other thing that was identified was independent contracted employees. I have no clue what that means. But there's 50 W-2 forms that I can't find an answer for, and that's why I'm here. Five, four, three, two, one. Thank you, gentlemen. I would like an answer. What are those 50? And that's a lot of money for some, somebody who can't find a nickel in the budget.
Thank, thank you for your time, Mr. Toohey. Um, I don't know if this is going to take some research to get you that information, but unless Mr. Roby can answer that now, but we can, we can dive into that a little bit and get back to you if that's okay.
Fair enough. I didn't expect an answer tonight, but I do. Would it be through you, Joe, that I would follow up if I don't hear anything?
Either with me or did Stacy Lawrence?
Stacy.
Okay. I was going to say that I'll put face with Stacy, and one of us will get back to you.
Yeah, because some, it just doesn't make any sense.
And we do appreciate your concerns. I, and as you ask me these questions, as, as you, you were very fair to say, I was shooting, kind of shooting off the hip.
Exactly.
But I did direct you towards the city administrator.
You absolutely did. And I thought that was him. So, Joe, I got my finger on the pulse.
Well, one never knows anymore. Yes. So, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, we can look into it. And I know that with, between 19 and 20, there was a big change in how many people we employ at the community center and office staff for the community center. So I know that's a big one that we, we, you know, as far as part-time.
My thought was that that should have been incorporated within the 86 people on the list.
Yeah, I think, i- if anything, I think we could give you like an itemized breakdown as far as the 2019, you know, who, who those 130 are and what departments they're in, and then the 86 where they're at, and then we'll be able to identify where they were removed. But there was a lot of, a lot of movement at the community center level, and we, there's, there's 80-some people that are employed by that, were employed by the community center pre-COVID. So that, that's where I'm guessing that we really scaled that back to just lifeguards and not office staff and other part-time staff. So, but we'll look, we'll look into it for you.
Sounds fair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Toohey.
Can we get him an updated one as of like what our current model is as well?
Well, for 2021? Yeah, I think those, those are W-2s are obviously out, so we can look at it.
I mean, at least a breakdown of what we have for employees. I mean, in my eyes, that should be a easy thing to come up with.
It is. It is. Yeah. And we have, you know, just, we have 39 full-time employees, and then the rest are all part-timers. And there's some turnover, right?
The one I'm assuming, I mean, I'm making assumption, the fire department's probably included in that as well.
They are. Yep.
So you got 24 people there.
Yep. Yeah. So it, it adds up pretty quick, but um, yeah, I think it'd be a good little exercise to just kind of understand what kind of has gone on with our workforce over the last three years.
When you do all that stuff, did you let us know too?
Yeah, I'll send it out. We'll, we'll send it out to the whole group. Yeah.
Very good. All right, moving on to item 7A. Am I correct? 2022, 2023 law enforcement, oop, law enforcement, labor services with the labor agreement with the police department. You want to review that with us?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of council. Tonight before you is the labor agreement between the city of LaSour and the LELS group, which are, is our police officers. That police officer group consists of police officers and sergeants. We have one sergeant and six police officers, five, five police officers. So that, that's the group that it, that it entails. It's a two-year agreement. What's before you, and that's 2022 to 2023. There are some slight modifications to the agreement, other than the wages, which we'll talk about separately. But we have a pretty, I think we have a good agreement with LELS. We've, this is my third iteration, so I can kind of own it and say, hey, we modified this to the point where I feel pretty comfortable with it. I think the group feels comfortable with it. But we did do a few modifications to know. One of them was adding Juneteenth as a holiday. So that'll be the 12th official holiday that the group has. They had 11 in the previous agreement. Going from a, just a city standpoint, where the city's providing uniforms and things like that, the group requested that we do $900 lump sum payment for uniforms. So there, they would now be responsible for the replacement of their uniforms. We would issue initial uniforms for new officers, but after that, they would have to abide by the standards set by the police chief in the, in the group to abide for that, by that for their uniforms. So they would then be on, in, in charge of that. This is a, a trend in the industry that groups are moving toward, where they receive this lump sum payment at the beginning of the year, and then they're, they're now responsible for, for their uniforms. The third thing was just related to disciplinary action, and we don't have officers that have much of any disciplinary action, but it's basically opening up the, the ability to have disciplinary action removed from personnel files if there isn't similar disciplinary action that follows the initial. So it's kind of a, you know, you get a disciplinary action, like a verbal or a written warning, or verbal or, or written reprimand. And if that basic, you know, deficiencies remedied in the case of a verbal reprimand in one year, and there aren't any similar, then that would then be removed from the personnel file and with a written that, that time period is two years. And that is beneficial to the, the, the officers as, you know, if they would ever look for a place of employment, you know, and they have remedied that, those things won't be in there when, when there's a background investigation. So that's a change. The next thing is the healthcare savings plan. Each contract iteration, the group can determine and, and what percentage of their paycheck that they pay into this, this fund, and they've changed that to 2%. No, no, no cost to the city, but this is just the change. They were at 1% before. And then there's an appendix, I think, appendus, appendix D has a list of those approved items related to gear, uniforms, and equipment that that officer is then required to maintain with that $900 lump sum. So those are the changes materially to the contract. And then the next thing I want to talk about are pay tables. So the pay tables have changed significantly. We've spent a lot of time, that's kind of why there's a delay in this getting to councils, because we noticed some movement in the market. We've looked at some job postings that some of our neighboring communities like New Prague and St. Peter have posted, and noticed that there was quite a bit of a difference between what our pay was for officers and theirs. So we did, we took some time and looked at our regional competitiveness. We've, we've done market studies and comp studies for this, and, and we were set up pretty well with the market when we did this in 2019 and 2020. But the movement, as you can imagine, in the police, in the police business has been upward, more significant than others. So being able to retain and recruit employees, police officers is very important. And that was something that we talked about at Personnel and Budget. So what we did is we looked at 2022 numbers, because there was a, a lot of movement between 2021 and 2022. And when this contract was initially negotiated, we just had 2021 numbers, and we were pretty good at that point in time. But 2022 numbers, after the first of the year came in, and we, we were then quite a bit behind neighboring communities as far as police officers go. So it's recommended to keep us within the range of the market, the regional market. This was, the, the pay tables themselves were reviewed by the, the Personnel and Budget Committee over a couple meetings. We kind of discussed this and knew this was coming and had a good robust discussion about this at the last Personnel and Budget meeting. And what we're recommending as a staff is that, that we keep an eye on that regional market. So if this contract is approved as, as it stands, to keep an eye on the market toward the end of this year to make sure that we're still within the market, because even at some of these wage increases for police officers, it's still proving to be challenging to hire at times. So there's groups that still have openings, that have had openings for over a year. You know, our, our friends in Montgomery aren't quite there where we're proposing to be at for pay, and they, they have three open officers in there, and they're, they're having a really challenging time recruiting individuals for those positions. So that's where we're recommending to be regionally as far as pay goes for police officers. And then if there are any changes that, that we would think would be required to successfully retain our current police force, those would be brought forward through the 2023 budget process if necessary. So what we're looking at today is just a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 LELS labor agreement between the city of LaSour and the, the police officers and sergeants here at the city of LaSour. So with that, I'll entertain any questions about the contract that anybody may have.
Mayor Kirby, I have a couple. What is Juneteenth?
Yeah, yeah. So it, it's the most recent federally adopted holiday. So it's, I believe it's June 19th of every year.
Juneteenth, okay.
It, it has to do with the emancipation of slavery, slaves.
Okay.
And it's, it's now a federally recognized holiday.
Got it. That's good to know.
It's when the, I, I may be a little bit off, but it's when the proclamation finally arrived on that date in Texas, as I recall.
Okay.
It took a while after it was actually put out. That's what it is.
Second question is the discipline agreement that you came to. Is that common practice, or is that unique to our contract?
That's a very good question, and it's becoming more common. You know, not all of the agreements that are out there for LELS have this, but it, it, it could potentially benefit the employer as well, you know, with some, with, if you have a challenging employee. So it, it's kind of a, a trade-off. So it is becoming more common.
Can you address real briefly how this will affect this year's budget?
Yes, that's a very good question, too. So we, we've done some time, and we discussed this, that Personnel and Budget, but the, the wage scale that, that's in this agreement is attainable without, we feel as a staff, we're going to monitor it, obviously, but without having to go into deficit. So there are some advantages that we've found in our current budget for salary that with retiring police chief and a, a few other movements that are occurring with city administration and things like that, that there is some capacity to take this on without taking on a deficit. But what we, what we told the Personnel and Budget and what we do on a monthly basis is, is monitor that. And if there are any changes that, that we see potentially happening, you know, addressing those through Personnel and Budget and City Council. So the current budget that was adopted, there's, there isn't a need at this time to amend it to accommodate this, we feel, but there will be some internal movements that staff will be monitoring to, to make sure that we remain on, in or under budget.
Very good. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if, if the chief could perhaps answer this question for us, we're talking about having things in personnel records that can be removed. I'm, I'm thinking particularly of reprimands, verbal and written. What type of incidents would that be? And what would not be in there, for example, that we'd be much more concerned about? My concern is, and I think our public would be concerned, about some serious offenses being removed from an officer's record. I know you have the answer to that, because I was part of Personnel and Budget, but I would appreciate your comment if you could.
So we use, typically, we use a progressive disciplinary scale.
Could you use the microphone, please? Thank you.
So right now, typically, in our disciplinary process, we use a progressive discipline scale, where we start with a, a oral reprimand or verbal reprimand that would be documented in a personnel file, and go to a written reprimand if, if that, or, or reprimand doesn't, doesn't do the trick and doesn't fix the problem, we'll, we'll advance to a written reprimand, and then we can move to a suspension with pay, a suspension without pay, and eventually termination. So typically, what we've seen for verbal or written reprimands have to do with things of minor misconduct, such as, you know, maybe a curse word was used in front of a, a citizen, or a minor policy violation occurred during the course, course of their duties. Those are the types of things that we, we would use oral or written reprimands for. If it moved into an area where we're using, you know, somebody incurred an injury as an excessive use of force, or say, a police officer's operating motor vehicle in violation of policy that resulted in serious property damage or serious injury, you know, then we'd be looking at a more aggressive disciplinary scale. So we don't have to enter that disciplinary scare, scale and be progressive. We can enter that scale wherever we see fit. So if we feel like, you know, the first step in the disciplinary process should be suspension with pay, we can start there. We don't have to start at the bottom. And obviously, we're going to measure, measure the egregiousness of the violation and compare that to where we should be at within that disciplinary scale. So if it's something that's pretty egregious, something that's pretty serious, like I said, that resulted in, in severe property damage or personal injury, we're going to enter that disciplinary scale at a higher level, more than likely suspension with pay. And that would be an instance where they couldn't remove that from their personnel record. But if we have minor misconduct violations, minor policy violations, we'll document those, retrain, use that, those verbal reprimands and written reprimands as a, as a training tool and improvement tool. Hopefully, we see that performance improve, and those violations don't repeat themselves. And two years is quite a substantial amount of time, realistically, when you're talking about employee discipline. And if somebody has corrected that behavior and hasn't repeated it in two years, I don't really see the benefit of keeping that written reprimand as, as a weight or an anchor in their personnel file if they've corrected the behavior.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions for our city administrator or police chief? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 LELS labor agreement.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Crowman. Any other comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Ayes have it. Moving on to comments, reports, and, uh, reports of items of appreciation. This is your chance, council members, to share any community events that are going on that you want to share with our citizens. At this time, we will start with council. share with our citizens. At this time, we will start with Councilmember Huntington.
I have only one. It's ARPEC, which we meet tomorrow here, uh, council chambers at five o'clock.
Thank you. Councilmember Krogman. Yes, the planning commission will be meeting this week. We did not meet last week because we did not have a quorum. But this week we'll be meeting and continuing work on the future of the city forum, which will be on the morning of March twenty-sixth on Saturday. Certainly council members and certainly members of the community, we want you to be there, quite frankly. It has to do with our, uh, comprehensive plan and where we're going in the future with our wonderful city. So thank you. Till then. Thank you. Councilmember Schleter.
Since the last meeting, had a HRA meeting, nothing to report from that meeting. Wednesday, there was a Lassure Colony officials meeting. We did have a guest speaker from Minnesota Valley Coalition of Governments. I have asked them to come to our next meeting and make the same presentation to us on the fourteenth. Upcoming activity, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Action Day is this Wednesday. And I want to, want to thank you all to Mr. Mylum.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan.
Uh, the only thing I have to report tonight is head of fire commission meeting on Wednesday night. Um, and they did the only bill item to note there is that they did receive a ten thousand dollar grant to buy some new extrication tools. Um, roughly thirty thousand dollars worth of tools, but there other sources of donations are going to cover the rest of it that they have. So they're on order. So we've seen them. Um, other than that, I just want to thank Marty and Bruce for their service and congratulate Aaron.
Thank you. Councilmember Swanberg.
Yeah, ditto. Um, thank you to Fireman Mylum and thank you to, uh, Chief Kelly and congratulations to Officer Tiki, now Chief Tiki, and congratulations also to Jasper on his new position.
Thank you. I think you kind of echoed everything I was going to say. So with that, um, I'm going to leave it to our city administrator. You have anything you want to close with?
Yeah, I think everybody, um, we have a lot of meetings in March, uh, that, that will be attending for city council. So bear with us with that. With the, the only one that hasn't been talked about is our retreat that we have on, uh, March twenty-second and that's at three o'clock and goes until probably about eight or nine o'clock. So there will be some food provided, uh, for the group. Uh, but yeah, that, that's where we kind of go through department, uh, department head presentations and then, uh, goal-setting session. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, I know we, excuse me, we got a real busy March. Could I ask that maybe you send out an email with all these different, uh, meetings we have in March?
I will.
To our council. Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, close this meeting. I'll, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Council members. I don't know.